Good evening, we will call the board meeting to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Gus.
Here.
Trustee Jensen.
Here.
Trustee Miller.
Here.
Trustee Addison.
Here.
Trustee Siddick.
Here.
Trustee Wells.
Here.
Attorney Magna.
Mayor Hooker.
Here.
Mr. McDonald is here.
We have a quorum, okay. If you would all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, our consent agenda includes the following. The approval of the minutes of the March 13th, 2014 board meeting. Bill is presented for payment in the amount of $145,352.72 in the February financial report. Is there anything that the board would like to have considered separately? Anything that the public would like to have considered separately? I would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Jensen.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Addison.
Aye.
Trustee Siddick.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
And Trustee Gus.
Motion carries. Next item, looks like Trustee Wells has a full plate tonight. Building and zoning committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a number of issues or items that we've been, that committee, staff and our planner's been working on for some time. First on that list is a consideration of the resolution approving 2014 Village Beach Park zoning map. And primarily what that is, basically just an update of the zoning map, which would include map amendments for 38964 North Sherden Road. Zoning change from B1 to B2. The Benito property, 12581, 12609 Eastwood Beach Community Church, and the Schultz property. Basically, this is just an annual update of the zoning map. Those who've come into the phone have... Oh, can't hear me? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, alright. Sorry about that. Again, this is just an update that we do annually of updating the zoning map in terms of various changes that have taken place on a zoning map over the course of the year. So, I would like to entertain in the form of a motion for the resolution approving the 2014 Village Beach Park zoning map.
So moved. We have a motion.
Second.
And a second for resolution number six. Any discussion?
Now that your microphone's on, could you just give us a close notes of those three changes? What do they amount to?
Again, I don't know if that's specific. The Benito property was Eastwood, it was a lot, these are a lot consolidation actually. A lot consolidation for the Benito property, a lot consolidated for the Beach Community Church.
I remember that one, thank you.
Yeah, they're actually building a new addition to the facility. And the Flitch property on North Shore Avenue, which was also a lot consolidation.
Okay, thank you.
And there was a map amendment on Sheridan Road, which is just changes zoning from B1 to R2.
Right, I saw that.
Yeah.
Alright, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Addison.
Aye.
Trustee Siddick.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Gus.
Aye.
Trustee Jensen.
Aye.
And Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we have a conditional use permit for precision roofing for operating a parking lot to tow vehicles at 3841 North Sherden Road. The conditional use permit expires March 8th of 2014, with the option of extending this permit for an additional two years. Many of you as board members may recall, we approved this about three years ago. I think Whitmore towing is the tenant who's actually towing vehicles there. And again, at that time, not knowing how this was going to work out, the board at that time opted to come back, bring it back before the board every two years to review it, just to see how things were going. And we're at that point right now where they're looking to renew it. The property owners would like it, as well as the tenant. We've had no complaints. I think the staff has indicated, with the exception of one, I do recall that when we initially started it, there was a neighbor in close proximity that was getting acclimated to that new operation. And other than that, I don't know of any complaints that we've had. Is that, would that be a correct assumption, John?
Yes.
Okay. Alright. And with that, again, and that petition is our Tom and Margie and Pearson, and asking the board to extend the conditional use for the additional two years. I'd like to, again, entertain in the form of a motion to consider an ordinance approving an extension to the conditional use permit at 3841 North Sherden Road.
So moved. We have a motion and a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
And a third.
Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Jensen.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Addison.
Aye.
Trustee Siddick.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
And Trustee Gus.
Aye.
Thank you.
What number is this?
Eleven.
Thank you.
Thanks, you.
Next we have a, next item we have for your consideration is at the direction of the building committee, looking at a tax amendment to allow temporary use permit for vehicle sales within residential districts. And one of the reasons for this ordinance change, ordinance change or amendment, is that we've had an ongoing problem, particularly along our major thoroughfares, our business courts and so forth, where individuals have parked vehicles in the right-of-way, they've parked them in the yards. Again, it's been an ongoing problem, actually it's been a revolving door in terms of automobile sales. And it really goes contrary to what we want to do in terms of the village, what we like to see. Village Beach Park is working very hard. Our staff and committees are working very hard to turn the corner in terms of attracting viable businesses, cleaning up major corridors and so forth. And this is initiative that we think go a long way to cleaning up and improving the image. So, again, this will permit only, permit vehicles only in residential areas at no charge and allowed for 60 days. However, this permit can be renewed, permit, there will be no charge for residents. Vehicle is defined as a non-commercial automobile and recreational vehicle that is generally the same size or smaller than a pickup truck. Vehicles must be registered or have registered within six, the past six months to the address in which it is located for sale. So, one of the problems again that we've had, that people were bringing, if you got in a desirable location, they were bringing in other individuals' cars and selling them, and they didn't have the proper conditional use permit. So, this gives us some control, a mechanism for our staff to have more control over that situation, so that we can again make sure that if they are going to be selling automobiles, that they have the necessary CUP and the necessary zoning that would allow them to conduct the type of operation. And with that, again, I'd like to entertain that, again, in the form of a motion to consider a tax amendment approving temporary vehicle sales in residential districts.
So moved. Second. Motion and a second. Discussion?
I think this is really a nice way to codify the private sale of vehicles. Probably most of us at one time or another have had a vehicle that we could probably, figure we could sell ourselves and make more money on it than trade it in. And I think that's, we need to recognize that and permit that. But yet, you want to control the, you don't, you don't ad hoc automobile dealerships in residential neighborhoods. So, I think this is a great way to do that. The only thing is, some people are going to, John's got a good spot to sell his car, nobody comes down my street.
Actually, Trustee, not only has it been a problem in the residential, but also in some of the commercial areas, we've had that problem, so.
I almost thought, actually, that our former Public Works site, we should, we should rent spots out there and make some money.
On a weekly basis.
That's a great location.
John, you got your hands full.
I have nothing else, thank you.
Any other discussion? Alright, roll call, please.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Addison.
Aye.
Trustee Siddick.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Gus.
Aye.
And Trustee Jensen.
Aye.
And again, that would be ordinance number 12. Motion carries.
And next, we have, again, an ordinance looking at amending the Village Beach Park zoning ordinance section to address amateur radio towers and antennas. We have had some requests to install towers or antennas. The staff has been working on this for weeks and months. And again, they've worked tirelessly, Jeremiah, John, and the rest of staff. And the committee has also worked tirelessly on this in terms of reviewing certain requirements such as locations, setbacks, colors, the quantity that you can have, wind speeds, which would again be up to 100 miles an hour, they'd have to meet that. And one of the critical things that we thought was important is that they actually have to have a structure engineer. We'd have to have drawings by a structure engineer to make sure the structures are safe, they're going to be located in residential areas. Staff has had an enduring challenge because there's certain statutes at the state level that requires us to allow ham radio operators. And again, they did all they could to keep us within the, to allow those individuals who did want to engage in that type of activity to allow that to happen, but also allow us the maximum control. So, we're at the, we're at the edge in terms of the ordinance, in terms of our ability to control it. But again, they did a good job of putting this together in such a manner that, again, didn't infringe upon the state statutes and the requirements that we were duly required to allow one to have. As a matter of fact, the ham operator is one of the reason that it is protected, is that in an emergency situation, be it a terrorist attack or some other unforeseen situation, it might be the only means of communication that the public might have to communicate if other communication sources were knocked out. So, again, I want to thank staff for their efforts and their hard work on this. And with that, I'd like to, again, bring forth this in the form of an ordinance to amend the Village Beach Park zoning ordinance section to address amateur radio towers and antennas. And like to entertain this in the form of a motion.
So, we have a, you were a motion?
Second.
Entertaining this for a motion, yeah.
Okay, and we have Linda as the second. Okay, this would be ordinance number 13. Any discussion?
Yes, a little bit. One thing that struck me is, I didn't see that there was some minimum, we're requiring engineering for any and all amateur radio antennas that are installed, even if it's smaller than your television antenna on your roof? Oh, okay, I missed that. Okay, then, that's all, that's the only question I've got. Thank you.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Siddick.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Gus.
Aye.
Trustee Jensen.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
And Trustee Addison.
Aye.
Motion carries. You still have more.
I still have more. Last but not least, this is a...
Save the best for last.
Save the best for last. This is an ordinance amending chapter 6.08 of Title VI, chapter 9 of Title XVII of the Beach Park Municipal Code. And primarily what this ordinance would do would allow farm animals, in particular chickens, in residential zone that met certain criteria. Again, this is something that some of our residents have requests. The planning commission, they've worked hard on this, as well as staff. Basically, what this ordinance would, it would be confined to lots of 20,000 square feet or more, so a half acre would be the minimum lot. We do have provision in our ordinance right now which do allow for chickens. Typically, those would be five acre parcels, as with most jurisdictions, they would be agricultural zone. So, what we're actually doing is reducing that to allow some individuals who want to move, gravitate toward more healthier eating, that was, that was brought to us, in terms of raising their own food. So, we're actually making provision to reduce that down to a half acre. Lot size would be, with the minimum of 20,000 square feet, would be allowed six hens. 40,000 square acres would be allowed 10 hens. The ordinance deals with the carrying of hens, it deals with a host of different issues. Everything from the containment of them to the fence requirements, coop requirements, coop size requirements, coop run requirements, sanitation, the keeping of food, breeding. Roosters would not be allowed, roosters, guineas would not be allowed as part of this ordinance. But it does cover a whole host of issues that we thought were important. And again, would allow individuals to, again, who met that criteria to be able to raise chickens and, again, harvest the eggs. Permit would be required, permit, the annual fee would be $30 for up to 10 chickens. There is a renewable, annual renewable permit. We've also incorporated a section that deals with waivers against the village of Beach Park for any liability. And we've also included in that a section that deals with complaints. Because again, anytime you get an ordinance like this, again, you may be subject to complaints. So, we do allow two complaints or more within a 180-day period, or three within a calendar year, would be subject to review and possible revocation. So, we do have, we've tried to cover as many bases as we could. So, again, very extensive ordinance, and again, do want to thank staff for all their hard work. And I'd like to bring this in the form of a ordinance, an ordinance amending, again, chapter 6.8 of Title VI of chapter 9 of Title IX, IX of XVII of Beach Park Illinois Municipal Code.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion?
No.
I will...
Notice that you're not allowed to slaughter the chickens within the sight of a right-of-way.
Yeah.
No kids on bikes will see that.
Yeah.
You can't shoot or anything.
And you have to slaughter them in a humane way, which, kind of like an oxymoron.
Yes, Trustee, that would actually...
Gently, you gently killed it.
Like jumbo shrimp, right?
That was one of the parts of the ordinance, that again, you couldn't slaughter the hens in public view. So, we wanted to be compassionate to people who might be neighboring, neighboring kids and so forth. So, I think we've got most of the bases covered and...
We, I have some experience in this area from many years ago, over, I had a family friend over on Ford Avenue, and we had a chicken coop. And we had 100 chickens and seven turkeys in, on Ford Avenue. So, you know the lots aren't that big there. I will say that the roosters went first. As soon as they started getting noisy, we had a lot of chicken for the pot. But we raised the hens and had the eggs, and there's a lot of predators around our community, and people will learn quickly that if you don't take care of your hens, the raccoons and the weasels and whatever else is running around will, but coyotes. But I think, I have to say, in my term as mayor, I've received more letters and phone calls from people asking for us to allow this in the village than anything else that we've done. So, I guess it's a, an item whose time has come, so if there's no other discussion...
Well, I have a question, actually, of Trustee Wells. So, if there, you raised the point about complaints, if there are complaints, will the code enforcement officer, how is that validated?
Yes, code enforcement officer as well as staff would also review the complaint, nature of the complaint, and also, they would, there's an option in there for revocation of license if in fact the complaints are such that it warrants it. They would review it on a case-by-case basis.
So, would they be subject to adjudication process that we have here?
Potentially.
Yeah?
Potentially, yeah. Like any code violation?
Like any.
Yeah, it'd be an ordinance violation ticket. And, you know, it's the repetitive nature of the complaint that's going to get them to lose their license for raising chickens.
Okay.
And I just want to say one other, just quick thing. There were some requests for smaller, smaller lots, but one of the things that we as a board have to understand is that every time we implement a new ordinance or a new regulation, that that means more enforcement, that means more staff time. So, as we, as we pondered the issue, we took that into consideration, that we have very limited staff that stretch pretty thin right now. So, we want to make sure, again, that we didn't overwhelm our staff with the much smaller lots because of potential complaints and so forth. So, I just wanted to make you aware of that.
Please call the roll.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Gus.
Aye.
Trustee Jensen.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Addison.
Aye.
And Trustee Siddick.
Aye.
Let there be chickens. The motion carries.
14 or 15? 14.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you very much.
Alright.
And that concludes my report, Your Honor.
Thank you. TIF committee has no report tonight. The next TIF meeting is scheduled for the first board meeting night in April, and it's to be determined whether that meeting will be held, lacking agenda items. Public Works, Trustee Addison.
My thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item, well, actually, the first two items, if you'll recall, we tried this last year and decided to do it again this year, taking advantage of some services available through the Illinois, or the Lake County Municipal League, like a joint purchase or a bulk purchase program. And we did it last year with the crack ceiling of the pavement, and it worked very well. We got a way lower rate than we would have if we would have been, you know, petitioning for proposals on our own. So, the two things that we agreed to utilize this year was crack ceiling and then some pavement marking, stripe painting and whatnot. So, the first, the first one on there is under the crack ceiling. The outfit that got the bid for the county at large, or for, you know, for the group at large, was Beam Pavement Maintenance Incorporated. That's who got the bid last year, and everybody was happy with them. So, are we signing a contract with Beam, right? Our portion of the contract. So, the motion would be to approve a contract with Beam Pavement Maintenance, a dollar amount of $13,505.40 for crack ceiling.
So moved.
Motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Gus.
Aye.
Trustee Jensen.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Addison.
Aye.
Trustee Siddick.
Aye.
And Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. The second item, like I said, is for pavement marking or striping. The company that got the bid through the municipal league was Superior Road Striping, Inc. We have recently had experience with them on Beach Road, they're the ones that got the contract through that, that program, and everybody was happy with them, so we thought that was a good thing. So, I would make a motion that we approve a contract with Superior Road Striping for our portion of the municipal league contract of $4,500.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Jensen.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Addison.
Aye.
Trustee Siddick.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
And Trustee Gus.
Aye.
Motion carries. And I might add that this is a fine example of municipalities working together to everyone's benefit. And appreciate the Lake County Municipal League coordinating this and making this available to all of us.
Thank you. Okay, and the third item is another thing that we did once before, and it's something that's required to be done on an annual basis. It's a resolution for reimbursement. The thing that we specifically were talking about with this was the work that goes into the SSA projects, the legal fees, the engineering, things like that. If we have this ordinance in place, that allows us to charge the fees that we incur to the project, to the SSAs, in a sense reimbursing us for the money we put out upfront. So, with, if I've done a good enough job explaining it, so I would make a motion that we can consider the reimbursement resolution for 2014.
Second. Motion and a second. And for clarification, that is titled, "A Resolution Expressing Official Intent Regarding Certain Capital Expenditures to Be Reimbursed from Proceeds of An Obligation." Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Addison.
Aye.
Trustee Siddick.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
And Trustee Gus.
Number seven.
Aye.
Oh, okay, and Trustee Jensen.
Aye.
Number seven.
Thank you.
Motion carries.
Okay, and that concludes the Public Works report.
Thank you very much. And item number seven, Finance Committee, Trustee Jensen.
We had a well-attended meeting earlier this evening, all the board members came, and none of the public, however, always invited to come.
Door was open.
Always open, yeah, door was open. We reviewed the proposed budget for next fiscal year. That budget, our finance director will be preparing that for publication, and the tentative schedule is to have a hearing in advance of, or in conjunction with, our meeting on April 10th. So, be sure to mark your calendars for that. And our next Finance Committee meeting is up in the air, we're targeting the week of April 15th, Tax Day week, sometime during that week. So, that will be on the village calendar, once we settle on a date.
Okay.
That's all I have, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Item eight, Public Safety, Trustee Siddick.
Thank you, I just have an FYI coming up. We have the spring pet vaccination clinic at the Public Works facility Saturday, that'll be running from 9:00 to noon. And as a reminder, this is a cash-only service, so be sure that you have that on hand, as well as, we ask that you please pick up after your pets. That's all.